I don't see attendees yet.
It's okay.
I'd like to call to order the January 4th meeting of the Needham School Committee. And our first item on our agenda is a very important person to all of us, to our town, to our budget, to our schools. Dr. Kudikens, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is your annual budget consultation with the town manager and with the town's finance director, Dave Davison. And if you'd like to have them come on up to the-
That would be great.
-table, microphone each. With great thanks to Kate and Dave for, you know, in the background, as we develop our budget, they're in the background helping, providing guidance and support. And this is an opportunity really for Kate to share a brief message as she is developing her budget right now that will incorporate the school department's budget. And then for school committee members to ask any questions that they may have as you approach later this month a vote on your proposed FY '23 budget. So Kate, thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting us and thank you for the amazing work that's going on in all of these school buildings every day. We're just, it's just amazing how important it is for these kids to be with their teachers. So thank you for that. This is our annual visit. I think it's 15th, 16th, 17th time we've been doing it. Some of you have been here the whole time. So we, we don't, we are early in our budget process in terms of gathering all the budgets, including the superintendent's draft budget, and looking at matching that with revenue. And Dave is here to speak to your questions I'm sure you'll have about revenue. And we want to hear from you about what your priorities are and where you think we're headed. Just a couple of things before I ask you those questions. I think that without question, we sit here today with a lot more predictability than we did last January about what our expenses will be. We were very worried about our revenue. And at this time last year, we were looking at asking for COVID-related expenses in the annual town meeting of between $0 and $6 million. And we ended up not having to do that because we got state aid and we repurposed a lot of other funding from building maintenance and public works and, and the school department. And so I think it's a lot easier to be sitting here today than it was in January of 2021. So that's helpful news. Wanted to point out that the capital plan is released today, technically today. It'll be electronically available tomorrow and you'll get your hard copies. Just to note the kinds of things that are in the capital plan from the schools, including the traditional ones, copiers, furniture, school technology, there's a school bus. Actually, the high school tennis courts are on the capital plan this year. So that's an exciting, I think this tennis court design, is that right? Yeah. So we're starting process of updating all of those kinds of recreational facilities. And also, an item that was added, I know you've talked about this, but that we're recommending and the board supported, is rooftop unit replacement at Broadmeadow and Elliott, which is a big project. It's a 800-plus thousand dollar design project in FY '23 with construction in '24, which probably would be funded in '24, but will probably take more than, more than that. And for a variety of reasons, I've heard, I know you've heard a lot about, from our colleagues in public works, we need to rethink how the conditioning, air, and heating and cooling in Broadmeadow and Elliott to help with the moisture and also to make the consistent heat level. So that's something that our two years of some of us becoming experts on air quali, air quality and HVAC have realized, even though it wasn't in the plan last year, really needed to move into the plan. So that's exciting. And really, the big item is the Emory Grover, which we're all very, very pleased about, refunding the, the construction of the Emory Grover in the FY '23 capital plan. Couple of other items I wanted to note, the select board adopted a set of goals and a goal statement for the two-year period last summer and recently did some revision to that. But their, the goals and their budget priorities are really stressing the importance of maintaining our buildings, investing in the buildings, investing in HVAC, both on-call services, staff, expenses, maintenance, and construction. So I know I can count on the superintendent and I'm sure the school committee to help us support those investments in our school buildings. And another item that we're really focused on this year is the maintenance of our outdoor facilities, a lot of our parks and areas that need more attention. People have been outside a lot. They're demanding more outside activity. And we're also seeing just the ongoing issue that you have all heard about is, you know, trash and maintenance issues and sometimes vandalism and, and how to address those things. So that's become a priority of ours. And since the vast majority of property in buildings are schools, it'll probably be something that you'll hear a lot about. And finally, one of the board discussed as a budget priority, really our, our 10-plus year effort at balancing our budget without recourse for an operating overhead. And they actually put in their budget priorities this year that that is something that they, is a core value for them. And it's something that we're, we're very proud of. We talk a lot every year, the first week of January about sustainability. But we don't just talk about it, we actually do it. And the budget every year is balanced when we get through it. Just one other item of note, we, we have been very fortunate to be given American Rescue Plan funds. We have two tranches of funding, one from the Commonwealth, directly from the federal government through the Commonwealth, and one through Norfolk County, which has different, they're generally the same spending allowances, but they have different reporting requirements and, you know, different paperwork and all the kinds of things that you're, you're familiar with, with grant programs. The board has adopted an initial spending plan, funding COVID relief, public health, more epidemiologists and currently contract tracing, public health, nursing. We're funding behavioral and mental health through our youth and family services, health and human services and aging services. That's been a great need. We've rolled out an economic development grant program you may have seen where we're providing grant funds for small businesses to do things that can improve their business as a direct result of loss from the COVID pandemic. And then there are some, some technology and some water and sewer infrastructure programs that we're allowed to fund through that. So they're very restrictive about how they can be spent, but we do have a lot of needs in all of those areas. So we will be moving forward. All the money needs to be incurred by the end of calendar '24. So that's the, if I could ask Madam Chair, Dave, to talk just a little bit about our revenue picture?
Good evening. The preliminary estimates for FY '23, we're looking at, we're cautiously optimistic. And, and the reason we say that is state revenues have been very strong and in all likelihood, state aid will not be reduced. The question is how much of an increase that we may receive from the Commonwealth this year. As I've said in the past years leading into our election, tend to, communities tend to fare better with state aid than the off-cycle years. And calendar year '22 is an election year. So the budget for FY '23 will probably benefit with additional resources. The town has continued to see incredible growth in development in town, particularly in the area of residential development. For FY '23, based upon the activity of the calendar year that just ended, should be much stronger in terms of property tax revenues. We're looking at probably a four to a four and a quarter percent estimate at this time. Now, one caveat to that is not unexpectedly, the commercial sector has been hurt as a result of the slowdown and restrictions and, and other activities that can be traced back to COVID-19. And we're seeing a decrease in the values of commercial properties. And what that does, it's in and of itself, it does not cost the town revenues. But what happens is the taxes that the commercial property owners would have paid will shift back onto the residential taxpayers. And as a result, as town manager mentioned, a priority of living within our means, but also understanding that there's a little tax fatigue out there and those are some of the extra pressures that we will have in terms of crafting a budget for FY '23. In terms of general receipts, not unexpectedly, when we were looking at this fiscal year that closed, '21 to '20, we knew there were going to be reductions in revenue because of the impact of COVID and what it had on the last quarter of FY, in, in the course of FY '20. We also anticipated that it would impact FY '21. And we saw reductions in revenue, economic activity-driven revenue, such as meals tax and room excise taxes. That's the, the tax that's assessed at the time one rents a room at the hotels. They were down 30% on the meals tax and more than 70% for the motel, hotel excise. Motor vehicle excise, although you heard that people were out buying vehicles, revenue from that declined from, this again, actual to actual, declined by nearly 10%, '21 compared to '20. And then just right down the host of activity fees for programs and such, because we weren't doing things, were down by 30%. Recreational activity was down a 45% reduction. General receipts from departmental activities was down 20%. And it goes on, investment income, interest rates, as we know, are very, very low and they continue to decline. We saw a 72% reduction in interest income. And Medicare reimbursements, we saw a, almost a 97% reduction in those funding sources. The positive news is we still hit our budget numbers because we adjusted our budget for FY '21 prior to the start of fiscal '21 in anticipation of these reductions. And there has been some recovery in some of the receipts that I identified, but there's others that are still very challenged, such as investment income. Motor vehicle excise is not showing a return to prior years. But because we adjusted our base prior, we can still anticipate from a budget to budget that we'll be looking at an increase in local receipts overall. And that's because of the precautionary steps that we took for FY '21 and into FY '22. We will know more at the end of January and by, and much more by the time town meeting happens in May.
I'd like to invite my colleagues to ask questions or make comments. We're really appreciative of Kate and Dave always and for the consistent and high-quality work and precision. We're lucky to have Dave and Ann who can work together on these kinds of necessary calculations. So questions or comments from the group? It was helpful to hear about the priorities. Sorry, I have a family thing going on, so I missed a couple there, but I'll catch up on those later. Any comments? Erin looks interested.
Thank you. Kate and Dave, it's great to see you. I had two completely different topics I wanted to ask about. The first is something that's come up with Sunita Williams and I think as we're planning Emory Grover, we need to think about, which is apparently there are some challenges with how complicated the HVAC systems are. And I don't know whether you think that the school committee or the town budget needs to be somehow taking into account additional maintenance that needs to be done, or are we, do we need to be doing our, thinking about our new capital projects in a different way so that we can take care of the brand-new systems that we install in our new buildings?
I think clearly we, there needs to be a lot of conversation at the beginning of the Emory Grover project about the systems. But it's also true that, you know, we have boilers and, you know, oil heat in some places and, you know, sort of space-related things in Sunita Williams. So we know that we need HVAC folks at the range of skillsets. We are working on a proposal to have some kind of higher-level HVAC person so that our director of building maintenance isn't on the roof all the time doing that kind of work because it's his specialty. So this is something we're, we're paying a lot of attention to right now. I do think that continued investment in everything related to HVAC work is something that you're going to be hearing a lot from us. And we'll also say that no matter what we would pay an HVAC person, it's very hard to get people, it's very hard to get people for everything. That particular one is one of the most challenging for us right now. But that, your, your comment about paying attention to the sophistication level and whether and how we'll meet it when it's turned over to us is, is on point.
Thank you for that. I'm sure, I, I know I would, and I'm sure my colleagues would support whatever efforts you're making in that direction, if, you know, if, if there's any funding that needs to be added. The totally other thing I wanted to ask about, and Dave, I don't know whether this really can be answered yet, but there were a lot of projections and forecasts about how much tax revenue might be gained from a project at Muzzy Ford. And we now know that the property has sold for $57.5 million. And we don't know, I guess, what the project is yet. That's a long way off. But I'm just wondering if you can put in any kind of context how that valuation compares to other things like the TripAdvisor project or other things around town? Can we start to get a sense of the tax revenue we might derive down the road?
The quick answer is no. The, the fact that the property sold for what it sold does not generate tax revenue in itself. It's just adjusting what the marketplace is and that will impact assessments in another year. But changes in valuation do not increase tax revenue, nor does it decrease tax revenue. We don't know specifically what property, what, what type of and mix of development will go there and the speed at which that will happen. Given the size of the parcel, it is quite possible we're looking at a plus a million dollars in tax revenue. And perhaps we can be a little foresight and look at some of the other projects that are not in this five-year capital plan that we have to address, that if we reserve those funds to address those expenditures rather than letting them go into the standard operations, we can help minimize that tax bite that we just talked about a moment ago.
So you're like reading my mind, but, okay, thank you.
We're on the same page.
Thankfully, we usually are. So we'll keep working on that. Any other comments? I'm sure there are some. Matt?
Hi, Kate and Dave, thank you for being here tonight. Kate, you had mentioned that there might be some increased revenue or supports for behavioral and mental health initiatives. I think last, at our last meeting, we had a fairly robust discussion. We heard from the increased need, the mental health crisis that I think everyone's been reading about nationally, but we heard about it very locally and how it's impacting staff and students, especially in the high school. So we had a discussion about whether or not there were enough supports in this next budget for increased mental health supports, even in the short term, as we are all coming off the, you know, year of hybrid and other, you know, learning situations. So I guess the, two questions. One is, are any of those revenues that you're talking about, would they impact our youth at all, either through school services or through community services? And then maybe a question either to the superintendent or about, are there any updates on that, from that discussion and timelines that, as we talk through kind of what might go into next year's budget?
Sure. Well, I can take that. The select board's approved preliminary budget for our includes behavioral mental health for youth in the sense of we're hiring an additional clinician and we're actually also supporting additional contracted services. These are all for the same kids, right? So these are services that we're providing direct, one-on-one counseling and, and other services for about, right now, it's about a two-year period because that's what the, will allow. We also will have funds allocated to the town from the Children's Hospital project. And so once a building permit is pulled for that, there's a $200,000 annual payment that is earmarked for youth-related health. And behavioral health is one of those things that, mental health and behavioral health is something that we can use that for. We don't have a great sense yet on when we're going to have that building permit, but we're working on that. The third piece is that we have negotiated that $200,000 payment. There's also a significant investment that Children's Hospital has to make in the catchment area of the facility in Needham, in the, in the, to the tune of millions of dollars for determine, what they call determination of need funding from the State Department of Public Health. So there is a, an advisory committee that's working with children's and the state to identify those services in communities that would be putting in for these funds. And we have more than one representative on that committee. So Sarah Schein, our director of Youth and Family Services, is on that committee. And she is really looking out for our interests there and will be collaborating with other health and human services departments, but also in the, we've collaborated already. Mary Lamie was at a meeting that we had and we've been brainstorming, I believe the superintendent was there too, now that I'm thinking about it, but brainstorming sort of what are the really big-picture items that we could be, you know, not nibbling around at a $70,000 person, but maybe, you know, could we get a community health center built? Well, probably not, but let's, let's kind of move in there. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at. But I would say that we, we actually are already hiring that, the clinician so that there'd be some additional support for Needham youth through that.
That's real encouraging. Thank you.
Colleagues. Michael?
Thank you. Thanks, Kate and Dave, for being here once again. You're right, it has been a lot of years. I want to go back to one of the things Erin asked about, just to clarify in my own mind. We know that when assessments change, it just changes the burden. So my property goes up and yours goes down. You know, we, we can only increase the total value by the two and a half percent. The new growth, I sort of understand on the residential side, where does the new growth kick in when a property like Muzzy, which was valued very, very low, has sold for a lot? Does it only kick in when somebody builds something? Or at some point are we allowed to assess it at a higher value as part of new growth because it's not, it's at a different use? Where does that actually kick in?
It, we would have to look at how much the rezoning actually impacted the property to create new growth, to create added value. But generally, the property sold is determining market price. And market price is not new growth. It can't generate additional tax revenue. It will impact what the value of commercial land is and as a result, could have some taxes, same amount of taxes, but some taxes shift back from the residence to the commercial sector, whereas this past year, it was, the opposite was true. It's the actual construction and in the renting of the property that determines what the value is. It's a commercial property, which does not change. And there are not many comparable sales in the commercial sector versus the residential sector. So it's done on an income approach in rentals and, and what they're able to secure for rent on, on, on the property will determine what that new growth will be. And as I stated earlier, the commercial sector's been hit and there's been concessions that some of the commercial properties had to make in the rents. And that's part of the reason there was a decline in value.
But in essence, so that unless we can attribute some, some value over and above what it's currently assessed at to the rezoning, we won't see any really new growth impact until they build, rent it out, the income approach then says, well, you know, you're now getting whatever the value is. But that would be considered new growth over what the value was because they weren't getting, you know, Muzzy was just using the facility.
That, that's correct. And also, the Muzzy use tend to, in terms of valuation purposes, does not generate the same type of lease as professional office space would. And although, as I said, professional office space right now is challenged because there is various properties that are doing some subletting now because of, and therefore their pressures pulling it down slightly. The good news is Needham hasn't had seen the same impact on commercial valuation that even some of our immediate budding communities have had. And that's been a benefit. There have been some companies that have relocated from Marlboro and Framingham into, into Needham. And there's been a couple more announcements of businesses moving into the old PTC facility, which has helped moderate commercial rental rates.
Yeah, that one particularly, I mean, that literally, I think, was just announced the other day, but Wellington Management, which is a very significant company, is taking over really entirely Building A. And I found very interesting that in essence, they're going to make it a net zero energy building. That's the requirement. Boston Properties is going to be investing significant money to provide what will be close to or a net-zero building for Wellington Management. So I'm delighted to see that. And I think that supports our own efforts in that direction. And certainly, that's a marquee tenant that speaks very well of Needham as a place to come and do business and not just for, you know, life sciences companies, which everybody's chasing. So I think that's great. I want to go back a little bit. We, we talk about periodically, but I just think it's worth reminding folks who are watching that, you know, we, we talk about how we make sure that, you know, we're one town. So there, there are needs on the school side and the municipal side. It's helpful to remind people how much collaboration and cross-engagement we have with each other. It's not really that separate. We talk about certainly in terms of the police and the school resource officers, the public safety support, and certainly in youth services. We were talking with the Finance Committee liaisons today and kind of making the point because they asked us that there's a really strong relationship and trying to support each other. And I think it comes through also in the, in the facilities. I think we're fortunate in that over the last several years, between the PPBC and the, and the building, facility staff have been trying to do a better job of commissioning. So we turn over buildings. But this challenge of the increasing complexity of buildings, in some ways, it's a good thing because it means better jobs for people doing it and it means the buildings will be better managed. But this is a really challenging time to find people. You've mentioned that for everything. And I've been having some conversations and sharing information with Alex and with Katie King about some educational projects that are going on locally in this industry to help produce more people. The Mass Clean Energy Center has some grants. So I'm hoping we can explore some creative things to bring in, you know, that we might make it appealing for us to bring in. And I think you know that you have our support, the superintendent's support for investments in, in building, maintenance and management. And I, I commend the work that you've done to date. I think the town needs to know that we're really committed to making sure buildings like this, which are now a lot older than we, I still think of them as the new schools, are well-maintained so that, you know, we don't find ourselves as a community, you know, 15, 20 years in with buildings that are just falling apart. And I think that, you know, it's to our credit, your credit for the work that's been done. I really appreciate that, that partnership and that support. And you have our support to, with the Finance Committee and others to make sure we are bringing the right people in to maintain and manage these buildings and get the value out of them we want to.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so once again, we really appreciate this collaboration and the ability to work so well with the town who, because we are a big part of what goes on in the town and FinCom anyway notices that. But we will continue to try to be as fiscally responsible as we can be while providing the safest and best education to our students that we can. So appreciate your coming, taking this time, all of the work you do on the budget. And we'll see you again soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move into the public comment section of our meeting. And I should have said at the beginning that we were going to delay that until after we could meet with Kate and Dave. We have a number of folks listening into this meeting. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hands feature. Because we have an agenda to get to and our time is somewhat limited, we would hope that you would identify yourself if you wish to speak. Tell us how you fit into the school system, your address, and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And also, try not to repeat something that someone has said previously, other than to support it if you wish to. So if anyone would like to speak who's on our Zoom meeting, you can use the raise hands feature. We have. At the moment, I'm not seeing, oh, I do, I'm sorry. I'm going to start with- I'm going to start with Sarah and then move to Cece. So Sarah, I believe you can speak now.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks everyone. This is Sarah Friedberg. My address is 95 Elmwood Road. I have two sons at the Broadmeadow School and our youngest is at the Newman Preschool right now. My comment is related to the current Omicron variant and testing in schools. It's sort of a question, and I'm not sure if the questions will be answered later, or if it just remains in a comment format. The, at the beginning of the year, quite a few parents, well, along with myself, had asked, you know, why Needham was not opting to participate in the routine weekly pool testing option that was being offered free through the state. And the reasons that were being offered were that the vaccination rate in Needham was high, which is very true and very much appreciated, that the transmission rate was very low in our town, which was also very true and very relieving at that point, and that that would mean that the chances of false positives would be disruptive to school versus, you know, the, the small potential amount that would be caught through that type of testing. And that the districts reporting, using the testing were, were reporting very low participation or, you know, parent consent so that they were not having very much help with their testing. In light of the new variant, which is evading vaccines, so that kind of takes away the high vaccination reasoning, as well as the fact that it's much more transmissible. Interested what the reasoning now would be to not be using this testing. I know there's quite a few parents, along with myself, who have reached out multiple times asking about this. We have over 300 parents right now that have signed a petition asking for this testing. This petition was just started yesterday. It hasn't had a lot of time, you know, to be socialized or to be promoted, but there are quite a few parents interested in this testing. And, and we feel that the best way to keep schools open, we all want to keep the schools open, would be to have the routine pool testing that could help identify cases early before they're allowed to spread in the school. And again, the other reasoning, the, the reasoning for not doing the testing was having low transmission in town, but obviously that's not the case now. So I'm interested in again asking what the reasoning now in this current variant is for not implementing the state-sponsored testing and if there's any plans moving forward to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And we'll now turn over to Cece. Sorry, I have to, there, I think I did what I needed to do.
Hi, good evening.
Yeah, start again, yeah.
Okay, good evening. My name is Cece Fleming. I live at 664 Great Plain Avenue, and I do have four children. I am on here tonight after having listened to and learned a little bit more about the way these conversations work, with a handful of questions, but actually a direct ask that we can hear you all tonight discussing my questions. As Sarah just did, she asked a bunch of questions and Ms., Dr. Barr, you said, great, let's move on to Cece. I think that we would all appreciate hearing you discuss and justify what the answers are. My, my topic is very different than Sarah's, however. I became aware today that the RAVNA questions have changed. If you are not aware, or anyone that is listening is not, is not aware, what the RAVNA questions changed to allowed for children, adolescents or pre-adolescents, who had received the two Pfizer series vaccine dose as early it was, as it was possibly available. So they went out and did it as quickly as it could be done in May and June last year. If their second shot occurred greater than six months from now, they were not allowed to go to school today if they were a close contact that had happened outside of school. So if it was a sports, or a church, or a family, or a whatever, close contact, but they were asymptomatic and had been fully vaccinated as much as they are physically possibly able to be vaccinated, they were not allowed to go to school. If, if this was an error and the programming on, on RAVNA didn't intend to do this, I hope that tonight you make phone calls and emails to the families that were impacted by this and whose kids couldn't go to school today to say that they can come to school tomorrow. If this is what you intended, I would like to hear you as a group discuss why you are penalizing children who immediately went out and got vaccinated for not being able to come to school today. They cannot physically have had a third dose. It's not possible. It hasn't actually been signed off and approved yet. So to punish and penalize these children who are not offered anything to do at home is the exact opposite of a welcoming environment. So I, I want to know if, if this was an error on RAVNA's part, or if you, if you can justify for us to hear why this rule is in place.
Thank you. We will be having a health and safety update nearer the end of the meeting. And we'll be addressing all that we can at this time. So we'll look forward to that at the end of the meeting. I see that M. Sterling would like to speak. M. Sterling?
Hi, sorry about that. My name is Margaret Sterling. I live at 119 Parker Road. I have two sons in the school district and I just wanted to second Sarah's comments. That's all.
Thank you. And Melissa? Let me just allow you to talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, my name is Melissa Bello. I live at 135 Highgate Street. I have a second and fifth grader at Broadmeadow Elementary School. I would like it just, I'd like to second Cece's comments and to go on record again that Needham held children out of school today for a vaccine booster dose that is not even available to them. This went above and beyond Desi and Massachusetts Department of Public Health guidelines. To my knowledge, there is not another district right now that is asking kids to quarantine because they are within, or they are more than six months outside their booster dose. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued guidance on December 30th or 31st that districts should not be doing it. And again, I want to echo Cece's comments that we actively kept children out of school despite the pleas from people across this country to get kids in school. And that is the most important thing for their mental health right now, and we did not do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else like to make a comment? I just want to try to make sure that I don't miss anybody. And I neglected to check and see if there was anyone in our listening audience in the room who would like to speak, but it appears we have a minimal number of public here. We have all folks participating in the schools. We would like to urge all of you who would like to reach us to email us at schoolcommittee@needham.k12 MA.us in case there's something you would like to add, support, talk about. Dr. Gudcan sees all those emails. We all see emails. And so we urge you to contact us in that way if you would like to as well. Thank you for your comments. And now we will move into school committee chair and subcommittee updates. If I stop giving feedback here. Any from the committee? Erin?
Just to note that this morning, the liaisons for the budget met with the Finance Committee liaisons. There was not a lot of action in that meeting. We went over a lot of questions they had had previously. I did want to just note for you, as I think you'll be presenting to the Finance Committee next week, is that right? They did seem to have a question, which kind of came up with Kate, about coordinating the resources for our youth and mental health resources between what we're asking for on the schools with what we're asking for on the town. I think in their own way, you know, they were just concerned to make sure that there wasn't any duplication or anything falling through the cracks. So we should probably be ready to answer that particular issue.
We will, thank you. And actually, Mary's already been in touch with Sarah Schein. They've had a few conversations, so we'll do that.
Great, that's helpful. Any other comments? In that case, we'll move into superintendent's comments. Dr. Gudcan?
I'm going to defer my comments for the health and safety update.
Great. And then we move to consent agenda. There are two things on the consent agenda, budget transfers and accepting donations. We're always greatly appreciative of donations from the community to support our schools and programs. Does anyone wish to move any, remove any item from the consent agenda? There being no objection, these items are adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you. We'll now move into what we've been doing, well, kind of always do, but doing specifically in the last few weeks, and that is budget discussion. I think everyone will, I think we're interested in all of them, but really knowing what's happening with our students in some very important areas, literacy and math is going to be something we'll all have an ear to. Dr. Gudcan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to welcome Kathleen Hubbard and Lisa Messina here this evening, who are our crackerjack curriculum leaders at the elementary level, or part of that team anyhow. And within your budget request, you recall that we have proposed funds for various different programs, including interventions for students, particularly in math and literacy at different levels. Tonight, Kathleen and Lisa would like to share with you broadly what we, what our program is about and how we intend to use those supports and in what way we're targeting them within this planned budget. And then they will be happy to answer the questions, but I think Terry's going to begin with an overview.
Right. Thank you, Dan. I'm really happy to be able to be here tonight to talk about our intervention models for literacy and math and to have Kathleen and Lisa join us in these discussions. The model that we have, our academic approach to intervention, is really a model that is paralleling the behavioral, social, emotional one that you heard last time in the school committee's presentation. It is a proactive approach to identifying students with academic difficulties before they occur. And the key components of it involve a universal screening for all students at the beginning of the year, tiers of intervention that can be amplified in response to levels of need, ongoing data collection and continual assessments, and school-wide approach to the expectations and parent involvement. It is a three-tiered model with core tier one instruction happening at the classroom level and interventions provided along a continuum of programmatic intensity. So these are the, this is the framework that we're using to drive our budget, our requests for this coming year. And specifically, our budget requests are to strengthen tier one core instruction to meet the needs of all learners in the general education classroom. So our focus is, is primarily on the tier one instruction that's happening in classrooms. We're looking at practices that are evidence-based. We're looking at the regular, regular use of formative and summative assessments, having a well-articulated curriculum and high-quality resources that support it. Strengthening the capacity of our teachers to be able to meet the needs of all learners within the general education classroom is a core belief we have and a core effort that we have in, in making our requests for this budget. We are looking at doing this through a, a well-structured coaching model so that teacher professional learning is job embedded. And we are also making sure that the work that we're doing is reflective of curriculum and instruction, that assessment that is aligned with culturally proficient and anti-racist practices, as well as the competencies outlined in the Needham Portrait of a Needham Graduate. So it's within this framework that we're, we're, we're making our requests and it's within this framework that discussion tonight will occur. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who's going to give us a brief description of the literacy program, talk about some intervention practices that are, are ongoing, and give us an outline of the requests that we need from the budget to be able to support this work.
Thank you. Thank you. As Terry- You're welcome, but thank you for being here. Thank you so much for having us. As Terry mentioned, we've implemented a number of things district-wide in the last several years that have put us in a better position to tackle some of the questions we have around equity and access for all students. We spoke about data the last time we were here. We do have a more consistent curriculum, core curriculum across the district, some greater coherence in our instructional practices and literacy, and our assessment. And we have made great strides in building our capacity to support teachers through job embedded professional learning. Definitely a stronger coaching culture in the schools. This has put us in a better position to have a laser focus on equity and access for all learners. So ensuring that all students reach high levels of literacy and become proficient readers, writers and communicators. I would say this work happens in, in two buckets that of course overlap. The first is aligning our assessments and our curriculum and instruction with the current neuroscience to better meet the needs of all students, particularly those who might be struggling in an area of literacy. And the second is to continue our work to implement culturally proficient in anti-racist practices for more equitable outcomes. There's a lot of talk in the nation right now about programs that work or don't work and a lot of rearing of the, the reading wars. I'm a firm believer that no one program meets the needs of all students. So we've been working in Needham for a number of years to make sure that we have a comprehensive literacy framework so that we are addressing all different types of readers and writers in front of us on a daily basis and giving them what they need. Most of our work in the last few years has happened on the left side of this, what I call the balanced literacy approach in Needham. And that is in the area of phonological and phonemic awareness and phonics. And I'll talk a little bit about those two areas in a moment. But I'll reiterate that it, all parts of the framework are important. So the areas on the right, the work that we do through Readers and Writers Workshop and our units of study, really making sure that we are helping students become thoughtful, critical readers and writers is just as important. So what, what is, what does it mean to align our curriculum and instruction with current neuroscience? If I had to capture it in a nutshell, most of our work would center around this top statistic here. The idea that most readers who struggle, at least 80%, are estimated to have a weakness in this area of phonological proficiency. So that's the ability to manipulate sounds. It's really a precursor to reading actual words on the page. And you'll see that that statistic is from 2005. This is not necessarily a new concept, but what science has been telling us more and more is that it's much more important to address this area early, proactively, more intensively and more systematically than we previous thought, previously thought. Our current fall data from kindergarten also shows this as an area of concern. So just a statistic that, looking at all the data we gathered on all kindergarteners across the district, I can see that 45% of kindergarten students are showing that they require explicit teaching in this area and, and others will require even more intensive support than what core instruction can do in the classroom. So additional intervention. We've also identified this as an area in our framework needing strengthening. So how? How are we doing this? First step was adopting the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program. It's been rolled out in kindergarten this year and will continue on to grade one. We began this work during the pandemic in remote learning. We've been working on strengthening our foundations implementation. That's been around for a bit, but we are strengthening, making sure that we're actually addressing, using data and making sure that all children are receiving the phonics instruction that they need, really thinking about our word study and spelling framework in the upper grades, strengthening our assessment tools, targeting our instruction, and making sure that the, the reading and writing units that we adopted are in line with this current research. We spent a number of years looking for a universal screener, at least since 2017, and we finally- and we finally settled on the Early Bird Screener. And we implemented it fully this fall, and we have data from that that we are looking at. And that will be done three times a year. And then we will roll this out in first and second grade over the next couple of years. Just cited there that, as we know, this is now becoming Massachusetts law, but we're well on our way to implementing this already. This graphic is just an interesting, very recent, it was just released in October, look at how data is being shared with educators in terms of what students need and how this area, this idea of structured literacy, which has to do with very systematic literacy instruction that has often been sort of more a special education approach, how many more students we're realizing could really benefit from this in both reading and spelling. So our focus has been on supporting teachers and classroom instruction and intervention in bringing these structured literacy practices into the classroom, into our framework, particularly in small group instruction. So we've been focusing on this targeted instruction inside the classroom as well as when we have pull-out or other intervention with our specialists. Another highlight I'd like to provide is the collaboration that we have between Gen Ed and Special Ed and ELL staff. And we have over 70 educators right now taking part in a ongoing professional learning with a developmental psychologist who really has expertise in the area of assessment and targeted instruction. We continue to do work aligning our practices with culturally proficient and anti-racist practices, working on auditing our curriculum, thinking about whose story is being told, who's being left out, working across the literacy leadership team and the social studies team to think about developing inclusive interdisciplinary content as social studies gets aligned with the new standards, and really enhancing our resources. It really does come down to instruction as a lever for equity. So how are students being instructed in the classroom? And one highlight I would add is the literacy department. So these are the literacy coaches, the literacy specialists in the building. For example, our spring read, professional practice read is a book called Coaching for Equity: Conversations That Change Practice by Elena Aguilar. And we'll be doing that with the math department. I think it's really important that the folks who are in classrooms supporting teachers have the capacity and the same language and lens that we want our teachers to have. So you'll see that for literacy, our budget requests are mostly around increasing our intervention and coaching FTEs, a little bit around Early Bird Screening, and then our Summer Bridge program for literacy and math. Here's just a quick snapshot. We've asked for increases at Mitchell and Elliott, and you'll see that these two graphics show, on the left is the literacy coach-to-student ratios at each school, and the literacy coach-to-teacher ratios on the right over two years. And you can just see, it's hard to see, but orange and sort of that brown color are Mitchell and Elliott. And you can see they have proportionally higher ratios. So part of what we're doing is just simply balancing that. At Elliott, it's even more imperative because unless we maintain the increase that we provided this year, we'll end up being out of compliance with Title I programming and the Title I grant. So we had quite a nice addition of temporary funding for this year, 2.5 literacy coaches and specialists, and you can see how that was broken down. So as I said, we're looking to maintain the Elliott and Mitchell increases and then make our Pollard Coach Interventionist full-time. Just a note about Summer Bridge, which has been a well-received summer program over the last two years. Prior to those two years, we had a tuition-based model called Skills and Thrills. Parents paid tuition. We invited selected students. It was focused on literacy. And we were able to serve approximately 50 to 60 students, and we had scholarships for students who needed them. Summer Bridge, however, has been able to serve, we served 132 students this past year in person. And if you look at the breakdown of the types of students that we were able to bring into the program, there's quite a range: economically disadvantaged, English-language learners, students with disabilities. We had a number of students recommended, and we had a selection process, and we were able to support students in both literacy and math. And so we have requested funding to be able to do that program again this year. One struggle we had was, since we used grant funding last year, the tentative nature, we weren't sure how much money we were going to end up with, so we weren't able to invite families very early in the year, and a lot of families had already made plans and paid for camps, et cetera. So it will be very helpful to have some local funds that we can guarantee and we can get started quickly, early in that program.
Thank you.
Switching over to math, I'm going to summarize, I'm not sure if this is on. My light is not on. Is it working? Going over some recent department accomplishments, some goals and highlights, and then move into the requests. So three areas of foundational work in elementary math are curriculum and instruction, assessment and use of data, and professional learning. In terms of curriculum and assessment, I'm sorry, curriculum and instruction, we are in the process of piloting some new core instructional materials in elementary with the intent to implement further next year, and I'll talk a little bit about that process. We're working towards greater coherence in instructional practices, building capacity to meet the needs of all learners through targeted tiered supports. And SD Math, which is a supplemental online resource, it's now in place in all of our K-5 schools in all grades across the district. In terms of assessment and use of data, we're using Star Math as a benchmark assessment three times a year in grades one through five. We have follow-up interviews that we use for students that come up having areas of concern to get further information. And then we have ongoing embedded assessment throughout our units of study and daily work to monitor progress over time. Coaches and specialists work with teacher teams to analyze that data and to monitor progress, both students that are getting supports within the classroom and students requiring additional tiers of support outside of the classroom. And we're increasing our coaching model through job-embedded learning. And our professional learning is focusing on instructional practices as well as supporting teachers this year that are piloting the new curriculum. And we also have a math team, a team of teachers this year that are focused on helping us with having a teacher voice in decisions that we're making around math, and also receiving professional learning that they go back and share within their buildings. We partnered with a group from DESE, I'm sorry, DESE is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, with looking at a network across the state of districts that are looking at improving their core curricular materials. And we partnered with the math department in their process of evaluating and selecting curricular materials. And the left side of this slide just gives a little bit of explanation of why it's important to really focus on a core curriculum that's aligned. And the right side is kind of an overview of the process that we went through. It was a four-phase process. We were in the launch beginning in this fall and moving into next year, so we had several parts of learn and prepare, investigation and selecting, and now we're moving into launch by having teams of teachers that are piloting the materials this year in preparation to use it more broadly next year. This slide has more details of that process. We had a team of coaches. We started with about 16 different resources that are currently available on the market, narrowed that down through our district parameters and priorities to a shorter list. We investigated about six different programs, and then we had a teacher team in June that evaluated two finalists with a recommendation of illustrative math as our pilot for this year. And so we have at least one grade-level team in each of the five buildings piloting the materials this year. Most of the schools have two. And we're gathering feedback from the teachers throughout this process so that we can plan for implementation and begin to provide professional development for the rest of our teachers to be implementing going forward. Our second goal around aligning curriculum and instruction with culturally proficient anti-racist practice is really tightly knit to this evaluation of core materials. These two sets of criteria were used in our evaluation process as we narrowed down the scope of programs that we were looking at. So we were really looking through the lens of addressing bias and stereotypes in student materials, and really thinking about culturally responsive practices in the teacher materials. And these two areas of focus brought us to the finalist through the evaluation process, which is called illustrative math. And the structure within this program is built on culturally responsive lesson structure from the work of Zaretta Hammond, which is something that we've been working on in the district across the different curricular areas. The Coaching for Equity book that Lisa referenced, we're also reading with the math department, and we're going to have some shared discussions with literacy coaches about that. And the design principles within illustrative math, IM is the short form for illustrative math, is a strong belief that all students are capable learners, and there's intent within the curriculum to provide access for all students throughout that responsive lesson structure. In terms of using assessment and data to progress monitor, this is a collection of all the different tools and resources that we use in the math program to monitor our student progress. And on the right side, this ongoing classroom assessment are just all the different pieces that are contained within that core curriculum that give us ongoing data on a regular basis. So in addition to these benchmark assessments that we do three times a year, there's constant progress monitoring so that we can make adjustments to the interventions across those tiers as needed. At the district level, we're looking at trends over time, identifying areas of strength and areas for further investigation. This year, we're really interested to see the district-level data, in particular, in response to the pilot curricular materials. At the school level, we can break down that data by grade level, identify areas of strength and need, and plan for coaching cycles and monitoring individual student progress. And at the classroom level, teachers and coaches work together to analyze the data and monitor student-specific performance by identifying specific goals in a particular domain and monitoring that progress over time, and then determining what are the additional supports that are going to be needed for those students. So in terms of requests, the budget request in math is in increasing the math specialist FTE as well as maintaining the FTE for the math coordinator position that was temporarily increased this year. The temporary funding this year allowed us to have additional specialist FTE so that there's coaches and specialists, and both are a combination of supporting teachers and students. And the increase in specialist position was allowing us to have more face-to-face student intervention at each of our buildings this year. And so the intent is to incrementally keep that support over time, starting with a focus at Elliott and Newman, and Teri can speak to the High Rock piece, so that we can continue those supports. The next several slides are data that support why Elliott and Newman are the areas of focus. This is from the STAR proficiency rate by school this fall, looking at students in grades two through five. So the students that were partially meeting expectations or not yet meeting expectations, those percentages were the highest at Elliott and Newman. The student growth percentile, the number of students that were in low growth was also the lowest at those two buildings. And our MCAS data is also aligning to those two schools as the highest areas of need, as well as the actual number of students identified by the STAR assessment as needing intervention according to the district benchmark this fall. I just said, that concludes our presentation, and we were open to questions, anything that you may want to ask. We'd love to hear from you.
I have to say, it's great to hear something about literacy and math when we are so focused right now on COVID safety, which is tremendously important, or we can't have our students in school to work with you. But it is a pleasure to hear about actual academics. Liz?
Thank you both. I really appreciate it. Found it fascinating. And I have two questions. One is sort of a smaller question, and one is kind of broader. So the first one has to do with one of the slides in the literacy section that talked about the number, the percentage of this year's kindergarten students needing phonemic awareness and other sorts of sort of phonemic, right? And I'm curious to know, like, for the sake of the budget, these are kids who essentially did not have a typical preschool program coming in, and a lot of phonemic awareness work does happen within the preschool through the songs and rhyming and all of that good stuff. So I'm wondering if you think that that 45% is high because of this moment in time, or if you think that kindergartners in general, approximately 45%, will need that level of attention in this type of teaching?
That's a great question, and I've been wondering myself. We've been wondering how the current kindergartners, teachers have talked about how they're, you know, they do need a longer one-way to get into school practices, et cetera. Like, is that an area that, exactly what you said, where a lot of that phonemic awareness is developed in preschool? And so time will tell, as we have this screener and better and better assessments over the next several years, and we track these students from kindergarten up. However, I will say that that number did not, that number is definitely in line with, if we look at these statistics, I would put those, so that the bottom red, that the 10 to 15% of students that will absolutely require that code-based work, phonemic awareness is one major aspect of that, but that systematic work, I feel like we've known, we see them, we know who they are. They're often on IUPs. They often have, you know, a designation with a specific learning disability. But that lighter color above, where you see the statistics showing that, you know, another 40% could really benefit from this structured literacy to have automaticity in reading, and then that piece above, the additional 35%, where learning to read seems relatively easy, but we end up seeing the gaps in spelling and writing later on as they get older. So while it could be a little bit of a COVID-related dip, it is right in line with what we see in the data nationwide and what the neuroscience is telling us. And keep in mind, it doesn't mean that 45% have a disability or have a debt, you know. It means that we need to make sure we pay close attention and strengthen that for them early on.
Okay, so in terms of budgeting, then, this is something that you think is going to need to be in the mix, at least for the foreseeable future, and probably sounds likely, just sort of permanently. And I'll also say, I could have used some explicit instruction in spelling.
Yes.
I still could use that. So my other question is much broader, and I heard both of you talk about it, but more so in the math. I love that you wove equity, excuse me, equity in terms of representation into this, like, really into this practice, right? But you also talked about equity in the form of instruction, right? And you showed the culturally responsive lesson structure as a path towards equity. And given that this is an important goal for the district, I'm hoping that you can really describe why that way of instructing is a more equitable way or will support all students as opposed to other forms of instruction. all students as opposed to other forms of instruction.
There was a recent paper that was released by an organization called Unbound Ed, and their focus is on equity in instruction. And in math in particular, they identified that the three biggest levers for equity in mathematics are having a solid core curriculum, acknowledging and affirming your students in the instructional practices, and providing specific targeted interventions as the three biggest levers. And so those three areas are things that we've been focusing on. In particular, the lesson structure, it starts with an invitation to all learners. So there's a, there's a warm-up activity in the beginning of a math lesson. It's an open task, there's usually a visual component to it. There are things like notice and wonder, or what do you know about X? And it's an open prompt that's an invitation to the mathematics that's meant to be accessing everyone in the classroom. And then throughout the structure, there's a lot of collectivism in the lesson structure where students are working together, discussing their thinking. There's a focus on deep conceptual understanding as opposed to procedure and rote memorization, because there's evidence that that conceptual understanding is what really provides all students to grade-level access, access to their grade-level mathematics. Sometimes when we perceive that students are having a hard time in a particular area of math, we think that they need to be pulled out and given something right at their level, which is also an important, that's the tiered support, the targeted support, but not in place of what's happening in that core instruction. And so that instructional model, the culturally responsive model that's including all students in the classroom is really essential, and then adding on those targeted supports.
Thank you.
Good questions and comments. There's a lot here, that's for sure. Michael.
Thank you, just one, this is a great area, and thank you, Liz, who can dig into this. The one question that I had, as I was listening to you when you did the assessment, is, did you look at, and how do you find the actual process of being able to use the data in these tools? Because sometimes you, you've kept something great, but it's so complicated to use, you spend more time training and trying to, you know, assess it. Did you look at that, and what's been the response so far in terms of how easy it is to use the data that you're getting from STAR and these other assessments?
I'll start with the Early Bird screener. So one of the criteria we had been using to search and why it took so long was not to add another assessment that was going to take, you know, be one-on-one, 20, you know, 20 minutes, that just was not feasible. And also, how deep and reliable was it going to be even through all, using all that time? Early Bird is, it's brilliant, in my opinion. It's gamified, and it's done on an iPad. It's taking a little more time, of course, than we had hoped originally, but students take it on an iPad, they follow this gamified assessment, and they can do it largely independently once they've been trained, and there's certain aspects that have to be done in a little bit of small group. But it was the ease of administering it, and then the types of assess, the types of data that we get from this simple, seemingly simple assessment, is data we haven't, we haven't had this early and this quickly and in this depth before. So now our work is to, and then there's a dashboard where students are, profiles of students show up, there's resources built into the dashboard for, you know, if you're seeing this in the data, you can do these types of instructional practices. So there's a lot built in that are very teacher-friendly. We've started with the coaches, of course, building their capacity so they can support staff as we roll it out. And we've had training from the company on how to look at data, both at the classroom level, individual level, school level. So yes, that always a hard to make sure that we have the time and, you know, to get the data and then, and time to sit down, analyze it and use it, but they've made it extremely user-friendly.
In terms of the STAR assessment, I think one of the biggest things to remember is that it's one piece of the big picture, and it's about 20 minutes per student, they're taking it on a device, and so it's not the best measure for all students, but it does get, it's very easy to administer, it does assess all domains, and it's adaptive. So as the students answer questions, if they're getting it right, they're getting harder questions, if they're getting it wrong, they're getting easier ones to kind of tease out their areas of strength and weakness. One of the benefits is that you see the whole picture, so it's looking across all the domains. One of the drawbacks of that is that we're most interested usually in numeracy or number sense, base 10, and so those areas are kind of equally weighted in the assessment, but we can, the more we use it, the more we learn about which reports to look at and how to tease that out. And then that draws us to the next layer of which students do we need to do further interviews with. It kind of narrows down the focus, but it's very user-friendly, and I feel the coaches in particular feel like the more we use it, the more we learn about it, and the more we can support teachers with using the data.
And my second question was, you mentioned in the literacy section, the screen for dyslexia, and then the data that showed that phonological challenges, you know, are the root of a lot of poor readers. To what extent, you know, have you seen, does that bear the experience that you have and that we have in the classroom that kind of verifies that that, does it validate what you see there? And then the second part of the question is, are there similar indicators on the side of math? And what are they?
Great question. So it absolutely aligns with what I've seen over the last 10 years, really thinking about this. I myself have personal experience with a child with double deficit dyslexia, she's in fourth grade now. And as we implement, I talked mostly about the early literacy work that we're doing, but as we implement some targeted assessments even with older students right now, so the past assessment is the phonological awareness screening test, and it can be used anywhere from first grade to adults. As we dig more to see, even if challenges start to pop up late, you know, second grade, third grade, as we dig into that area, we are finding that, we call them, the science calls them compensators. So students who were able to compensate, their oral language is really high, their strategies are really good, excuse me, and so they've been able to appear on grade level, they look great, and they get stuck. And so when we assess in that area, we are finding that that is playing out to be true. And so it is part of the foundation, the Wilson Foundation systematic program. If you read the description, it tackles phonemic awareness, but it's just not to the depth and rigor that we need it to be. So adding that component to core instruction, I mean, anecdotally, I am already, I was with some kindergarten teachers earlier after school, and anecdotally, they're saying, wow, kids are starting to, you know, come up to me and say, do you know, this was a story today, Teri's laughing, she was there, a student came up to her and said, do you know that if you put hot and dog together, it's hot dog? And now, that, believe it or not, that is on the, that skill, being able to put, hear that and put it together, we are finding is sort of the linchpin of being able to be a fantastic reader when you're in ninth grade. So it's absolutely playing out. I've never felt more, I've been in this, '95, I started teaching and became a reading specialist in the early 2000s. I haven't felt more positive about something, you know, a lead, that we might crack, crack the code here, and so that, absolutely.
The math research is a little, a few steps further behind the literacy research, but we've been working with a woman named Becky Lord, who's doing some professional development with our math team this year. She teaches a course called Decoding Math, focused on dyscalculia and other math disabilities. And there are indicators, so that one side of your brain is really responsible for the visual, we call it subitizing, where you're able to see groups of objects in arrangements and know how many there are. And so weaknesses in that area are one indicator, and then mapping that to the symbolic and making the connection between those two are some of the early indicators. And so she's doing some work with our math team on what can we do about that. There's a real visual component, which I'm so excited, there are visual components embedded throughout illustrative math, which is another strength of the program, where students are really seeing the concepts and building that picture in their mind before they're having to map on the symbolic and make the more procedural connections to that. So we're a few steps behind literacy in the research, really across the world, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
Mike.
Thank you for your presentation. Really good information and really beneficial for us. And I have two questions as well. The first question in regards to phonics and the continued need, of course, as we're wearing masks, how has that been for our early learners? Where facial expressions are so important in that learning process, are there other ways in terms of offsetting with illustrations or other ways of learning for our early learners if we're continuing to wear masks perhaps through the rest of the school year and who knows beyond?
Yeah, that has actually, that's absolutely been a challenge, particularly speech and language support with, even within intervention. We actually found that a lot of the intervention we did over the last year for literacy in these areas was where it was on Zoom, and that was actually, in some ways, better because you didn't have to be masked and you could articulate. So that's, I'm in classrooms all the time, and even the Hegarty program, you know, sometimes it's hard to hear with masks. I have found that a lot of teachers have, are mic'd, and that makes a huge difference to be able to hear the sounds sometimes. That makes all the difference, just to be able to have that. But yes, it is definitely a challenge.
Thank you. And the second question is with the Summer Bridge program, where you mentioned that if it was in the past summer cohort, that 132 students participated, and there are almost 250 or maybe even more that were recommended to participate, is it, 132 is perhaps a capacity number? Sort of how that slot process goes? If there's 250, could more students participate? And you're sort of anticipating that a number of students won't be able to participate? How does that process sort of work?
Yes, so part of the number difference is, as I was mentioning, that families begin to ask for summer programming in the fall. It will ramp up this month. A lot of families, you know, make plans or, you know, put kids in camp by March 1st. So we did lose some participation because families were busy or going to be away. I also heard a number of families say, you know, it's been such a crazy couple of years, my child just needs time in the summer, so we aren't going to participate, we'll support them in other ways. Not a huge amount, but I definitely heard that. The large number of students recommended, we definitely said to anyone in the schools, like cast a wide net, let's make sure, you know, if you have any, any concerns, or you would even just say, hey, pay attention to this child, let's cast a wide net and get all of the names in one place, and then we'll have sort of a selection process. So through that natural, you know, looking at historical data, looking at where students were, perhaps they were recommended early in the year because we started this process early, but then they flourished and by the spring, you know, they were no longer quote "recommended." So sort of a mix of both. And yes, part of it was just funding available to us, and the other piece was finding staff to teach when they've come off such a challenging year. We had some staff who have taught in the program for years and just said, I really have to take a break. And so even just finding staff to cover classrooms. But we were able to support all the children who we invited and joined us for the summer.
Great. And so from your assessments that you've had, and maybe it's too soon at this point for those that benefited from the program and those that were recommended but didn't participate, do you see any difference in terms of maybe some of the assessments that showed the benefits of the Summer Bridge program?
Yes, so we are trying to track that. It is challenging with, so students either participated in literacy or math or both for part of the program or the entire program, and so how do we sort of, and it's a four-week program, so how do we think about the data there? If they maintained, that's, that can be a win, right? There was no summer slide. So we're still in the process of trying to figure that out. I will say anecdotally, I keep, just got an email the other day, that a student who participated is now on grade level, and was a big thank you, as if, you know, Summer Bridge really made a difference, and I'm sure it did boost, but those, that's really anecdotal data. The other piece, I would say, is there's a social emotional part of that summer program that's hard to quantify or capture. So students are in school, participating in learning and activities, a lot of students stayed and participated in an after-care program that we had set up, and so they were doing wonderful constructive things for the month of July, and it's hard to quantify that, that ad.
In terms of the math, I think it was something around 78% of the students that participated in Summer Bridge were either partially or meeting expectations in the fall, so that would be considered pretty much maintenance for those students. Some of the students that were not meeting, there were notes in some of them about attendance difficulties, or students that intended to come and then were sick and were out for a week, or, we also had some specific, there was math in the general program, and then there was also some targeted math, and so teasing out which of the students were receiving which of the math supports, but in general, we had some positive data in the fall assessment. I'm interested to see if that carries over now. We're about to do our next round of the STAR benchmark for the next couple of weeks.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Matt.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, that was a question I had as well. I just wanted to follow up on it a little bit with the Summer Bridge program. I think, right, the research shows that the students are most affected by summer slide, learning loss, whatever you want to call it, are exactly the students who we're reaching out to. Economically disadvantaged students, English language learned students with disabilities. I'm not exactly, so I hear some of the staffing challenges, but I would hope, and I think this might be a discussion for the committee, that as we look to 2022 summer, that funding is not a reason why we can't support, supporting every single kid who is recommended by their teachers after the last two years, and the data we're seeing, and all the work you're doing with tier-one teaching and you're putting into coaching, that this is pennies on the dollar to provide summer support. So I understand some of the other constraints with staffing and getting people to the door, but I hope, and again, if we need to discuss this, I'd like to put it out there, that funding should not be a reason why we cannot support slots for any kid that needs it in a community such as Nilo. So I want to appreciate that feedback, and again, perhaps add this to a budget discussion as we move forward. On the flip side, just a comment, thank you for the presentation. I can recognize, in my own experience, this, the tension and balance between sort of school autonomy with district-wide systems for curricula, for assessment systems, for coaching, for all of these inputs. And what I heard, I think, tonight, from my own personal bias, was super encouraging, which it sounds like more sort of elementary-wide systems for this type of work, which frankly is equity, so that if a student moves schools, or they have a certain expectation of a baseline of support and a consistent experience from school to school with strong teacher support and coaching, I thought was super encouraging. I think that's a little different, and I think that's the move, but I think that's huge, on a personal basis, I think that's a huge plus for equity across the district. And it was really encouraging to hear, and look forward to hearing more about how it goes this year and years future.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to comment on that balance of autonomy, and it's even more than school autonomy, just the expertise that teach, every teacher brings to the table, you know, it isn't programs that teach kids, it's our expert teachers. Absolutely, since I started in 2013, we have, I call it that foundational work, because now I feel like the hard work begins, which is, we have rolled out more common practices of curricula, but now that's allowing us to look systematically and have conversations and look critically about what's working, what's not working, which we weren't able to do before. So it is absolutely that balance of, we have to have a coherent curriculum and then build capacity for teachers to do their magic with their expertise, absolutely.
And thank you for fostering that cross-school collaboration and learning, so appreciate that.
Just to build on that, in terms of the culturally responsive piece, when the teachers have the common resources, then they can use their autonomy to focus on who are the students in my classroom, and how do I lift the voice of every student in here, and so that the coherence, you know, they're all working from something common, and then they can really individualize based on who they have in their classroom. they can really individualize based on who they have in their classroom.
And then I also wanted to add, I absolutely agree with you in our district, we should be able to support every child in the summer. And it wasn't a matter of support, we had the district's support. It was more the craziness of COVID and timelines and using grant funding. And so I think with the local funds we have in the budget and then additional funding that we'll probably gather along the way, we're able to hit the ground running now. So, you know, as soon as we, we get the okay. So that's, it's more of a timing and coordinating and having that funding so we can start preparing.
Great, great to hear. Please keep continuing to cast a wide net. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you remember these days, Dylan? All that, when you were learning math and reading like this?
All the tests and everything.
Okay. I just have something I was going to say, but Terry, I'd like to invite you to comment if you'd like to.
Well, I think what you saw tonight was a sampling of all of the hard work of many people across the district. And having teacher voice in this work is critically important and having the structures and the time for teachers to do this kind of work, to participate in helping shape this, because this just doesn't come from just a one-source location of making this consistent across the district. It comes from many voices who sit at that table, who sit across, who are from across the district, who are able to make this happen. So that when we talk about things like collaboration time for teachers, it is critical. Professional development time for teachers, it is critical. And in order to make this happen, we need teachers working together, working in teams, working in collaboration with their coaches, so that when we're executing all of these practices, we're doing them from a position of strength and knowledge. And we thank you for your support throughout the years. The things that happened during the summer, the things that happened because you staff us with, with the staffing are all very important parts of making all of the pieces come together so that we can have the kinds of consistency. And it isn't a one-way or another, it's that we're all believing in the same thing and moving in the same direction.
I'll just say a couple of things, Dr. Gutkamp may want to. I think that's a really important point and what I, as I see the years go by, more coaches, more curriculum leaders who can help pull those pieces together and do some of the structural work so that teachers don't have to produce all of that. They can take advantage of what you have to offer and put the pieces together of collaboration and professional development and new programs. I really appreciate that that's what we're building, we're putting more and more FTEs into that and I think that's our real strength. I love the idea, again, of equity being built in. If we, we don't have, we, we want it to be part and parcel of what's done every day. And the way you are weaving it into things, we've sort of heard about it in literacy, but to be able to weave it into math as well. And that's where we need your coaching and the curriculum leaders, et cetera, to do that and that's very exciting. I'm not always going to think about this as the hot dog work. But I remember when my son was first or second, I don't remember, he was, they were doing their, their writing as they could do it. And he didn't separate any words and I was a parent of first, for a first time and I was like worried, was he ever going to separate the words? And one very good teacher pointed out to me that he would when he saw it. And then he saw it and did it. And that's what you bring to all of our students and the teachers who are working with them every day is to know the areas where you can push a little bit and the areas where you wait for them to see it. So I'm really excited to see all this hot dog work go on. I'm not sure we'll use that term with the finance committee, but it is hot dog work. So that's much appreciated. Thank you so much. Dr. Gutkamp.
Just, I want to thank Lisa and Kathleen for being here and their leadership throughout the district. And Terry's right, this is the work of a lot of folks, you know, our elementary classroom teachers and leaders and our principals, Terry's efforts and Lisa and Kathleen and Elise and all the directors, you know, Brooke. In about a month or so, I'm going to bring to you, it's coming later than it should, a calendar for next year, 22, 23 school year. And, you know, on that calendar, we have typically Wednesdays is an early release day. I may propose more to you, we'd have to trade off some times, but in any event, whatever you vote on, I'm hoping that you'll continue to support at least what we have in there now for Wednesday, early release, because that's where a lot of this work happens. When you bring these people together to work together to set these targets, set the goals and then do the work. So it's one small piece, but I think it's an important piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
And your thoughtful questions.
Your important work with all of the folks that do this in our schools. Hot dog. And now Dr. Gutkamp is getting ready for our health and safety update. I just had a couple of comments. They're not in direct answer to what we were asked by some of the speakers earlier. Frankly, I'm not sure you want the robust discussion, discussion here of some of the questions that were asked. Even I, as a physician, don't have the expertise to answer all of these. This is really why we delegate much of this to the Joint Health and Safety Committee where there are multiple areas of expertise to discuss how we should be handling things going forward. And I can promise you that all of the different opinions, there are many opinions about what we should be doing every day and all of those are considered. We pay attention to them and the Joint Health and Safety Committee pays attention. They take these very seriously. So that's important. And that's, I think, where the really robust discussion of what exactly we should be doing is, we certainly welcome questions from all of you, from all of you, everyone and from our listening public and from parents. But we have, the real expertise is in that committee. And the second thing is, is that we do follow guidelines, guidelines that are provided by our national health leaders, by our local public health leaders, by DESI. And none of, I don't even want to repeat the words, but I will so that I can make the point, none of this is about punishing children. We are well aware that we are trying to keep our students in school, that this is best for the social, emotional, health and wellbeing, and that the best way we can do that is to pay attention to the guidelines out there, to tell us when and how to test, when and how to have folks in school or out of school. And some of those are not to everyone's liking. We'd like to probably let everybody just decide and that just isn't possible. So that what I can, what I'd like to assure everyone out in our listening public, all the parents, all the staff, is that we do think about all the different aspects that are brought up to us and examine those. The leadership examines those, the principals examine those, the joint committee examines those and do the best we can to keep all of our students in school. And we should be doing them based on, on research and on guidelines and not just kind of what we think on any given day. That's my opinion. So I feel like we aren't going to specifically answer some of the questions that we were asked, but we do, we are aware of these thoughts all the time. And now Dr. Gutkamp will update us on what's going on. We are back to school.
Sure, we are. And I, you know, just, you know, I realize, just to maybe pick up on something you said, I'm just thinking about the presentation from Lisa and Kathleen, which is about curriculum content and instruction. And I'm sure a lot of folks, a lot of family members, parents are listening to that saying, wow, a lot of good information. I don't understand all of it, but I trust what they're doing because they seem to have the technical expertise and the background. And of course, I trust my child's teachers, so I know, I don't understand all of it, but I, I trust good things are going on. With COVID, I think it's personal to all of us because we've all had some kind of experience with COVID, either personally or with a family member. And we know what we think are the rules when you get sick and who you go to. And so I know family members are looking at what we're doing in the schools and have questions or ideas or suggestions about how we should do it based on their experience. They feel freer to share when they might be more reluctant around curriculum. And I get that, I understand that. So we do welcome the comments and the questions. I hope I can get to, you know, one or two of those things that were brought up. And we're all in this together and we're figuring it out and we will figure it out. So with that, Madam Chair, first of all, welcome back and Happy New Year. I haven't said that. It is a new year. What I'd like to do tonight is share some data and then I want to share what we're doing to promote health and safety. However, I thought as I was sitting here, we had the expertise of Dylan Aloney, who actually has been in the classroom the last couple of days, and I figured he might share with you how the first couple of days have gone, which he's graciously offered to do.
Yeah, thank you. And I think just speaking to that point, that health and safety is always on the mind of both the teachers and students at the high school. And just these first couple of days, these first two days, it's been a slow but also quick start at the same time, at least at the high school. Students are still trying to get back into a rhythm that they might have ruined over break, but at the same time, it's a, it's a quick turnaround. A lot of teachers are trying to force this routine and this rhythm back onto students, which is very good. And so I think the general opinion is that many students are happy to be back in the building and that overall, even though they might, might have earned for a longer break, at the same time, they're happy to be back, happy to have some type of structure back in their lives. And that overall, the building still feels like it's full of life, even if, you know, the holidays are over now, people are still excited to be back and ready to get back into it. And I think at the same time, that the school is doing a good job or they're taking good preventative measures, at least in, in terms of some of the emails and other measures that have been sent out in the past couple of days to keep students in the building and keep students in classrooms.
Thank you, Dylan.
Nice segue.
Okay, so let me get into some data. This data is on the district's website. It was shared with the Joint Committee on Health and Safety. A lot of numbers here, I'm not going to go through all of them, just a couple of things to point out. You'll notice the blue icons, those for Newton, Brookline and Boston represent communities. This is from the Department of Public Health, the Needham Department of Public Health that have a mask mandate within the community. And you will notice that what's been happening lately, and this data is of 1230, 21. The positivity rate, as we know, has gone up both statewide and locally, certainly it has in Needham and it is in other areas of Suffolk and, excuse me, Norfolk, Suffolk and Middlesex County as well. And we expect that that will continue to rise over the next, next week or so. Another way to look at it, you know, for Needham and in Massachusetts, unsurprisingly that the rate has climbed steadily at, locally and through the, throughout the state. I think what's important too is to look at what is happening with the numbers by age and the cases in December. Maven, by the way, is the state's program for medical data. And the, there are, as you can see, a breakdown. Of course, our focus is around zero, age zero to 18. It's also though, other ages as well, because we, we need those staff members to be healthy to be able to teach those younger students. So we're, we're looking at, at all age groups, frankly. And yes, more younger students in ages five to 18 certainly have been impacted by COVID. I'll probably say this again, but I'll say it now, that what we've heard too is that students, if they are contracting COVID, it's a mild case or they are asymptomatic. In Needham, over the course of December, as you can see, there had been some, an increase if you just look across the month. And of course, we've been hearing that nationally as well. The hospitalization rate, while it has ticked up a bit for younger students, does remain quite low. And I think this is an important metric, that we're, we're keeping kids out of the hospital and not getting seriously ill from COVID and that's important. And that's certainly something that we're looking at on the Joint Committee of Health and Safety very carefully. Locally, over the last couple of days, let me share this information with you. Student and staff attendance. All of us have been concerned about that and hearing about districts that closed or held back or delayed because they're concerned about staffing. In Needham, student attendance yesterday was 84 point, was just under 85% of our students attended. And for our staff, just a little over 90% were at work. Both numbers were, were probably not surprising, but they are concerning in that on a typical day, we would have more than 93% of our students present. And for our staff, it's much higher than that. So yes, we certainly have had students and staff out because of COVID or students who are still traveling. Today, there was a slight tick upward in attendance. Eighty-seven, a little over 87% of our students were in attendance and 91% of our staff at work. We're going to keep tracking this, this week to see how we do and where we're going because of course, this is something that I'm particularly in tune to regarding our staff. We need staff to keep our buildings open and certainly for our students. I'm pleased though, and I think this is important and it picks up a little bit on Dylan's comment about life in the high school, students have shown up for school and staff have shown up for work. By comparison, a pre-COVID comparison, January 2nd, it was Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, that's before it all fell apart, that we had on that day after vacation, 91.5% of our students were in attendance, lower than it usually is. And again, that's because there's some lag, maybe some flu over vacation or students coming back late. But I, I offer this data to the school committee in the community to provide some context for where we are and what's happening in the schools. I want to share the good news in the Needham Public Schools. Some of this I shared with you before the break, some of it is new. We have safely reopened the schools and we are keeping students learning in their classrooms as long as it's healthy and safe to do so. As we know, our student vaccination rates are very high. I'll say this once, I'll say it again, there's going to be another clinic this weekend for ages five to 11 at the Needham, Needham, Rosemary Recreation Center. Families, please go online and register at Needham Public Health to get your child vaccinated. It's either for a first or a second dose. Hospitalization rates, as I mentioned, are extremely low for students, children under the age of 18. Again, our students and staff have just really been extremely cooperative with health and safety protocols. Dylan and I talking about this earlier actually, that he said, my words, not his, but there's a, there's a newfound sense that students are, you know, wearing those masks just right, right now. And that whole discussion that we have been having about when would we become mask-free, it's on hold for sure. We will have that discussion, but now is not the time and I appreciate our students really paying attention to that and for families to be thinking about making sure that students have masks and have, have the right mask. We were very appreciative to have Dr. Connie Barr and Ms. Andrew Olongo Carter, along with several students, help distribute some test kits to our teachers over the weekend with appreciation for your efforts there. And of course, we're going to continue to ensure that our tested stay program, our ventilation and hygiene measures are in place to optimize what we're doing. Those are the good things that are happening. And of course, there are challenges. And, and these are, you know, quickly evolving challenges. As we know, the Omicron variant has caused a lot of concern. There is a surge in cases. If you look at the district's dashboard, and we try to keep that, we post daily, although over the holiday break, we, we did not. And so there was a bit of an accumulation of cases, especially if you look at yesterday. But we had more cases today, I think at least six cases today. And we expect more cases. We, we know that that is going to happen. And, you know, everything we're hearing, we hope that there will be a peak to this sooner rather than later. However, we're, we're continuing to, to watch that. And we know, and I'm very much concerned as your superintendent about the impact this is having on staff because staff are exhausted and staff are getting sick. And so we're trying to do our best to keep, keep folks in place. 90% of our staff in attendance is great. That means about 100 folks are not coming into work. And those 100 folks are pretty important, classroom teachers, bus drivers, nutrition service workers, administrators, assistants, and, and all of them really have a role to play in keeping our schools open. So we're, we're, we're scrambling to, to meet those needs and we'll, we'll keep doing that. Students' academic needs, as you just heard, are on the forefront of our minds as well as their mental health needs. I didn't address it directly when Matt asked earlier, but yes, your budget next week when I present it will include an additional counselor at the high school. Now, that's not something we just hope will happen next year. That person's in place right now. And so what will happen is that position will continue, again, if you support. continue, again, if you support the budget. And that will allow us to continue to address these very real and growing concerns, but not just at the high school, the middle school, and at the elementary level, we're paying attention to this as well. One of the things that's a huge challenge is the increase in testing and the availability of testing and the long lines for testing and the lack of PCR testing, that everybody, again, COVID is personal, and people haven't experienced with it. So they say, well, you should do it this way, it should be this way. The, this whole testing landscape has complicated our efforts. And, and I know it's frustrating for families, too, just trying to get a test or to figure out what to do. That's, we're experiencing that in real time in the schools. I talked to at least 20 superintendents today, either on the phone or via text, and all of us are, are scrambling to try to understand often contradictory rules that are really frustrating efforts for our nurses, our teachers, and families. And I guess that's the next point, that the quarantine and isolation rules and protocols require updating all the time. And, and this does lean a little bit into some of the comments earlier, and I appreciate the parents' comments. Folks need to understand that the CDC, the Mass Department of Public Health, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and sometimes Needham Department of Public Health, may have to together sort out some often contradictory rules. I, I know that Dr. Barr experiences that as a physician. We're experiencing that in real time. And what makes sense to a family at home is not something we can do in school. And so we're trying to work through those things. I guess one of the best examples is the whole business around close contacts. You'll recall that if you, if you became a close contact in school and participated in test and stay, you could remain in school. But if you were a close contact in youth hockey, you couldn't come to school. So parents didn't understand that. You must be wrong. Mr. Superintendent, fix that. But that was not my rule. Those are the rules of folks who don't often agree with each other, either, by the way, and, and we're trying to sort that out. I don't say that by way of whining. I say it by way of explanation. And it does, of course, speak to my last point, that folks are really trying to be patient, and they are. But people are also very confused, and I am. So I also, though, want you to know that we're going to continue to prioritize healthy and, and safe schools and learning. You know, what are we going to do with all this now that we know? So a few things. We are prioritizing classroom instruction and support by assigning appropriate staff to assist in the classroom or to substitute when there's a staffing shortage. So that means that teacher assistants, administrators, for example, will be helping out. If there are any, if there are any college students who are sitting at home right now and they can't go back to college and they're looking for some help and they would like to make a few dollars, contact the Needham Public Schools on our Human Resource page and we'll set you up to help out at lunch or in the classroom, maybe take over superintendent, whatever, whatever would be appropriate. But we are, we are really kind of triaging when there are staffing shortages, where, where we go and how we're, we're making that happen. We've been working closely with Needham Public Health. They are amazing, by the way. Mary Fontaine, Tiffany Zeig, Tim McDonald, the whole crew there, just been working overtime and over the holiday to help us. And of course, we are in contact with the department regularly to review our, our next steps and go back to them frequently, a few times a week to clarify something. And that may lead to a clarification for the entire state. We are updating our guidance for families and staff regarding quarantine and isolation protocols. We'll continue to share this information on an ongoing basis. We have updated the health attestation. The health attestation is accurate. And it is, it is a bit confusing, and it's one of those pieces where families are like, well, but why is it different out here than it is there? Mary can address that in a little bit. We do expect all families and staff to, to complete that. It's an important tool and it is helping us. And I know sometimes it's confounding to parents, especially since we've just changed it up. And if we do need to further clarify it or for rule changes, we will absolutely fix up that attestation. But it's an important step for families to take, particularly now. I said already, I'll encourage families of five to 11-year-olds, please sign up for the clinic. We know we have about seventy percent of our youngsters have had at least one vaccine. Now, most of them have had that second dose. And, and then there's some confusion. Mary will address that for a moment about the booster and when that takes effect or not. It, it, it's a, it's a pretty crowded landscape out there of conflicting rules or many layers to the rules. So please, I guess is my point, sign up for that, for that clinic for a vaccine for five and 11-year-olds. One of the things we are doing at the middle and high schools, we're limiting athletic event attendance so, for fans. So we're really just allowing one or two family members to attend, both on both sides. And we're managing that process just to limit the crowd, but still have some excitement and energy for, for our students. I did want to talk a little bit about, we are, we're designing some, some visuals. We're not done yet. This is a work in progress. It's a draft for our families. And I'm going to have Mary briefly take you through. We're not going to read through all of these pieces. This document will be online tomorrow morning and certainly if folks have, have some feedback. It's, it's three different diagrams. Just going to have Mary share with you briefly what we're trying to do here and what some of this, the new rules of the road are.
Thanks, Dan. Yes, and the, and the whole point really is to try to take all the information that is coming our way from the CDC, from our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, from DPH, from our Board of Health, and try to get it to a simplified form where we can best, to the best of our ability, articulate where we're following which protocols and why. Isolation is probably the most straightforward, and then we'll talk about quarantine. So the changes that came our way over the, you know, less than a week ago, was that if you are to test positive for COVID, you're going to isolate for five days at home and you're going to, for an additional five days, wear a mask. So that's a change for us. I am hearing that there's more information out there, particularly from CDC, around a ten, ten-day isolation. We are aware of that. But right now, these are the requirements that we're following, and this is what we've been communicating out. The verbiage below just gives a little bit more detail for, for folks' reference, both around what to do when you are staying at home, testing positive for COVID, but also under notifying the school, if you test positive, there's a few different pathways that families and our staff members should be following in order to notify the school in the, in the right way. This is where it becomes tricky. There's two slides here, and hopefully this will bring some clarity to why, why there is differentiation between some of our, some of, some of our littles who are over their vaccination six-month or two-month period and the impact that that has made. So this is quarantine guidelines for individuals exposed to COVID for out-of-school exposure. And the, the important point here is, these are requirements that we follow under public health, the Department of Public Health. So our Board of Health is following DPH, and we are following what our Board of Health are directing us to do. So these protocols, again, are about when there's an exposure outside of school. For individuals who are boosted or who have completed the Pfizer or Moderna vaccinations within the last six months, or completed the J&amp;J or Johnson and Johnson series within the last two months, again, for an out-of-school exposure, there's no quarantine requirement. These students, if you will, can attend school. They would continue to wear a well-fitting mask. We've been talking about medical surgical masks and KN-95s for, through day 10. They're going to test on day five. And of course, if they develop any symptoms, we, we are wanting to see them get a PCR test and obviously to stay home. Now, for the second population of individuals, if you've completed the Pfizer or Moderna dose more than six months ago, or completed the J&amp;J, that should say two months, apologies, or, and are not boosted or are not vaccinated, this is where we're seeing our students needing to be in quarantine through day five, not attending school during quarantine, wearing a mask, testing on day five, and monitoring for symptoms. So just again, to clarify, this is when we are following DPH guidance, okay? Now, the next slide is about in-school exposure. And this is where we shift from DPH requirements over to DESI guidance. And DESI guidance lifts a little bit of the restriction for us, and that is to allow greater access to attendance in school when there is an in-school exposure, based off of data that they've used to indicate there's a lower risk of transmission. So in this case, when there has been an exposure in school, for students who are fully vaccinated or individuals who are fully vaccinated, and what DESI says in regards to their definition for fully vaccinated, these are individuals that have been, received their second dose of vaccination at least within two weeks, or two weeks past the J&amp;J. This is where we're seeing a change. These, these students are now not quarantining. They're not required to quarantine. They can attend school. And again, we're looking for wearing a well-fitting mask, testing on day five, and monitoring for symptoms. And if symptoms develop, get a PCR, test and stay at home. For students or individuals that are not vaccinated or are partially vaccinated, meaning that they've had one shot, maybe not two, or they're not that two weeks out, these students are our students that can continue to attend school as long as they participate in test and stay. However, they, they must continue to quarantine outside of the school day through day five. That's not a change. This is something that we've been following from the beginning. Wearing a well-fitting mask, as we've been saying, testing on day, day five. And of course, if you develop symptoms, get a PCR and test at home. So yes, we do have students who are falling in this catchment of having been vaccinated, but it's past six months. They're not old enough for the booster. It's a problem. We've raised this as recently as this afternoon, when there was an inter-agency meeting between DESI and DPH. And we're continuing to ask for more clarity where these protocols are banging into each other. But hopefully that at least provides some clarity around why there is a differentiation between what, the protocol that we're following and when we are.
And we expect to, you know, refine these, that, you know, that six will change to two. This is all meant as a draft. And get, put this on our website to replace the ones that, replace the other ones. And we'll put a date and a time mark on it so we can make sure people are looking at the, the latest. So-
I just, one question, if I may. Both of these are for exposure, but asymptomatic, no symptoms, correct? You sort of say that in here, but it might be something to make explicit. It's exposure and no symptoms where both of these apply. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. If you're, if you're symptomatic, you're getting tested, right? You understand? Yep.
So how are we going to continue, you know, moving forward? So a couple of things. First of all, if I felt it were necessary to call a, we'll euphemistically call a snow day because of staffing shortages or other reasons for health and safety, we'll, we'll do it. We won't do it, you know, without a lot of thought, but we will do it. And it's possible a call like that could be either early in the mor-, I would like it to be late at night, but it could be early in the morning. And I recognize the pressure that puts on our families in Boston and in Needham. And that would be something, you know, in the forefront of my mind. But if it's not safe to have kids at school because there aren't enough adults to supervise, or there's some other health and safety concerns, I, I think there's, there's a matter of balancing that. And I think kids at the end would, would be safer at home. So hoping that doesn't have to happen, but it's certainly something that we would have to do. Joint Committee on Health and Safety is, we met last night. We're meeting next week. We're going to continue to meet regularly. And we're also planning in the next week or so to hold another opportunity for families to interact with Health and Safety Committee and ask questions. We'll do the same thing for our staff, thinking about the timeline over the next week or so. Kind of, hopefully, some things will settle down with information. Even as this surge continues, we'll get information that we hope can, can be a little bit more lucid. I think, lastly, I think it's important, and it picks up Dr. Barr on what you said earlier, that we're going to continue to work very hard to make sure that we have timely and as coherent information as we can and to get it out to people, to be responsive and to be proactive. But we're going to make mistakes. And it's going to be messy sometimes. But I think all of us working together, as you said, students and families, parents, our staff members, and our healthcare partners, including those in the Department of Education, the Department of Public Health, we'll, we'll get there. And lastly, I, I really want to emphasize this for, for our families, for, for our staff, who have been very graceful through all this, as our families have been. And as Dylan was so eloquent, everyone really has been trying to row together. And I just want to remind people to make sure that you're exhibiting patience, grace, gratitude, and I hope every once in a while, we can laugh about what we're going through. I know that's hard sometimes, but we need to be able to do that because we are, we're in a good community. We have good things going on. We're supporting our children in the right way. And we are getting through this, and we will get through this. So Madam Chair, appreciate being able to share this and happy to answer any questions you or the committee may have.
Certainly appreciate all the work and care that goes into this and communicating these. And again, I just want to say thank you to our nurses and contact tracing folks out there who are doing yeoman's work every day, trying to manage testing, contact tracing, kids with regular illnesses, kids with the flu. So really appreciate all that everyone here does and all of our nurses and principals also, who are doing that kind of work in the schools. Comments or questions, particularly because we know that our parents are very interested in this? Liz?
Thank you so much. And Mary, especially, thank you for walking us through that. So I'd like to just do two things. The first is I just need to try to say back to you what you said to me, to see if I've understood it correctly, if that's all right. So basically, the students in our schools are subject to two different governing bodies and two different sets of rules for what happens when they have an exposure. If it's in school, they're subject to DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If it's out of school, they're subject to the rules of our local Department of Health. And these sets of rules are A, not the same, and B, changing, but differently. Okay. All right. I think I've got it. All right. And then the second one was, I know at one point, the commissioner had just basically said flat out, there was going to be no more remote schooling. So I know, though, that there are some provisions for students to, if they're home quarantining with COVID, they can contact their teacher, at least at the high school level, and stream in. Is it, even with the surge, even with schools, I know in other communities that have not, just have had to close because of surges, is remote still off the table from DESI?
I'll answer that two ways. Yes, right now, remote is off the table from DESI. And yes, we are providing at the secondary level, an opportunity for students to connect at certain times with their, with their teachers. We're not doing that right now at the elementary level. I think depending on what happens with, you know, the, the, and this is probably more true for our younger students who are not vaccinated. Younger students who are not vaccinated, who end up in quarantine, could be out for a while. And so we are going to have to think about, you know, what that means and how we might be able to connect them to the classroom. I don't have an answer for that right now. We have managed it up to this point because our classroom teachers have done a great job connecting with them. If, if there are more numbers, it becomes more complicated. So that's something I think that we're going to have to sit down and try to figure out. But for now, you're, you're right. The commissioner has ruled out going back to remote learning. The other thing the commissioner, you, you may recall, the commissioner had said that on January 15th, on or about January 15th, the mask mandate would be up. I, I continue to believe that he'll be in touch with us shortly. That hasn't happened yet to suggest that that date's going to move. Have not heard anything about that yet. In any event, in the Needham Public Schools, we're not removing masks pre-K through 12 anytime soon until the Joint Committee on Health and Safety can recommend me that it's the right thing to do. That is not right now.
Andrea?
I want to just express my deep and profound-
I want to just express my deep and profound gratitude for all of the nurses, public health, administrators, principals, everyone who's having to share all of this constantly changing information with parents and students and staff, because it is incredibly complex. And I feel like where we sit around this table, we're sort of deep in it, and it's hard for us to understand. I can't imagine what it's like for everyone else. I feel like we've been living all of these different changes for the last two years, so it, you can sort of follow it and track it, but it's incredibly, incredibly complex. So, I really do want to express my gratitude to everyone for all of their work conveying this constantly changing and very complicated information, because the flow charts are, I've seen them for different industries, they're nearly impossible to decipher, and I think what you've put together is straightforward and clear. Dan, I know that, you know, we heard from a parent tonight, a couple of parents, talking about the pooled surveillance testing. I want to go on record saying it's not something that I'm in favor of, for a lot of reasons. But I think there's a notion that the testing being offered by the state, this pooled testing, is free. But I know that there is a tremendous administrative burden associated with doing a program like that, in terms of staff time and resources. And I was wondering if you, you know, maybe could address a little bit what some of this sort of administrative burden of doing something like that might be for us? Because I think there's this notion out there in the community, it's free testing, offered by the state, of course, Needham should do it. And there's a fallacy there. I was wondering if you might be able to address, either now or at a later date?
I can try to do some of it regarding surveillance testing. First of all, the subject of surveillance testing comes up at the Joint Committee on Health and Safety every time we meet. And again, we're fortunate to have several public health folks who, medical professionals, who can help guide our thinking, and that's important. And we read a lot. We try to take different, you know, opinions into consideration. There is no one epidemiologist, for example, who will say this is, that all of us agree it should be this way, because they don't all agree. So, we're trying to sort through all that. We will continue to look at the efficacy of surveillance testing. The landscape has changed a little bit with Omicron, so we'll certainly take that under consideration and figure that out. The state's program was implemented in the summer, when staffing was a little easier to figure out, a little bit easier. Maybe not much. It's become increasingly more difficult to find staff. Even for our test and stay program, we are not completely fully staffed. To go into surveillance testing now would require more staff. I understand that, I believe, from contacting the superintendent in the local community, I think I'll just leave it at that, the National Guard will be deployed to help with testing tomorrow, in the next couple of days, because they just can't get folks. You're right, that the staffing resources are incredibly significant and are hard to come by. If it were a matter of, it would just be hard work for the principal, or hard work for the superintendent, we would do it. They're ready to do that. It's not just that, because it's the staffing resources from the state are not there, and I don't think we'd have the staffing sources locally to do it. Additionally, it's going to be an impingement on student time and classroom time. Our focus is to keep kids in the classroom learning, and pulling them out for pool testing, you know, pulls away from that classroom instruction. Nonetheless, we'll continue to, you know, look at the efficacy of surveillance testing. I do want to point out, though, that in six or seven communities, one of the things that's a consideration is, you know, how many students will participate? Because that will impact, again, the efficiency, the efficacy, and your data. And having spoken to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight superintendents today, for data from today, that in the Newton Public Schools, there's approximately 70% to 75% participation in their surveillance testing, which is pretty good, actually. It's actually very good. Natick Public Schools, around 70% or more in participation, which is very good. Wellesley, and they do pre-K through six, it's 63%. Medway, 40%. Westwood, 40%. Shrewsbury, my hometown, 25%. And another local community, which I will not name, got their, did their pool testing yesterday. Now, these other communities, this is data from December before the surge. A community did testing yesterday, received their results today, and said, a lot more people signed up. And they've been doing it since September. They only have 44% participation in that community. Nonetheless, we're not, we're not looking at any one thing. We're trying to figure out, in this time, where do we want to put our resources? What's the best bang for our buck that will be healthy and safe for our kids? I think we have it right, but we're going to the size wide open, and we're going to continue to decide and discuss what makes sense now that we're in this, kind of a new phase of the pandemic. And is surveillance testing something that we want, an endeavor we want to float? It's not right now, doesn't mean that it couldn't be.
Just one brief comment there. I think there's a feeling in the community, we often see numbers quoted that are considerably higher than the ones that Dan ascertained today from superintendents. There's a feeling that the communities around have, I've heard, as much as 80% or 90% participation. That's just not the case. So, that might be something we just need to know and can share with people individually. Are we ready for comments?
Yep.
Questions? Yep. Oh, and there is one ready for you, Aaron.
You know, the Washington Post motto, which I think about all the time, democracy dies in darkness. We don't have a lot of good local coverage for residents of Needham at all. They are dependent on watching these meetings, maybe the occasional Facebook discussion and post, which I think we could do a better job participating in. They are dependent on what little information is revealed about the committee on, the committee on safety and health. It's somewhat troubling to me that the committee doesn't produce materials. We don't really understand how it reaches decisions, what was discussed. Did it take a vote on whether or not this, the district should participate in pooled testing? Does it just operate on some sort of more amorphous consensus? You know, it's hard to trust when there's not information, and I think that's what we're hearing some from parents and around town from people all the time. So, I totally understand that pooled testing is not the end-all and be-all, and that it may not be appropriate for our community. But in a situation where almost every town around us is doing it, there's very little information about why we're not doing it, and how we decide that process, I think it's very understandable that there's a lot of anxiety in the community that we're not doing it. So, my recommendation would be that there needs to be more information about decisions, such as why we're not doing surveillance testing, and how that, what was the process by which we got to that decision. I will thank Mary. That was an absolutely fantastic explanation, and echo what my colleagues have said. For people who, in the community, were clearly confused, because this is a confusing subject, there is not enough information or journalists on the beat for people in Needham to know that there's two different sets of rules, depending on where you were exposed to, and became a close contact. So, thank you very much for that super-clear explanation. And my final comment is on the attestation form. I mean, I think the superintendent sent out a communication, which was fantastic in some parts. Like, it said, there are going to be new isolation rules, and it gave you a link to the new isolation rules. But on the attestation, it sort of was a little more vague, and it said, you know, we will continue to update this as necessary. So, maybe we could be a little more pointed in those communications and say, you know, the attestation has changed, so, you know, read it carefully, or something like that. And those are my comments.
Liz?
I just want to go on the record as agreeing with Aaron. And I think that, at this moment in time, we need more communication and more information. And I also, just at the same time, want to acknowledge that, I know that this team here is running a school system, a large school system, in a time when there is conflicting information coming out, and staff and students who may not be able to attend because of a, because of the pandemic. So, I want to just recognize how challenging your situation is right now, and acknowledge that. In asking you to move towards a deeper form of communication, I'm also adding more to a plate that is already heaped high with COVID. So, just wanted to acknowledge that.
You just maybe flashed to my work situation, in which we have many, many of our staff out. So, we are, the job I do is now increased, because I'm doing the work of medical assistants and triage nurses and other staff members, which I suspect is the case in our schools as well. It's not to say we shouldn't do the best we can to get information out, and maybe we can figure out a way to at least comment on where this, what happens with the discussion. And it's, everybody's doing double, triple time right now, I think. And I don't, and just, I don't see, at least in my business, that we're likely to have anywhere near full staffing for quite some time. And I imagine that's some of what's happening in school as well.
Well, it's true. We can also, and we'll continue to, you know, provide as much information as we can. We can't become the Needham Times. That's not our responsibility. And, but we can absolutely look to see what we can do to communicate. I will, you know, the Joint Committee on Health and Safety want to be clear, their role is advisory to me. It's not a public meeting. It's not a publicly posted meeting, nor does it need to be. I share updates from them, I think, every school committee meeting, so I think that information is out there. We have shared on a few occasions why we're not doing surveillance testing. We've put that out there. But we will redouble our efforts.
I think you did, in your last update to the school community, include information about why we were not doing surveillance testing. I guess we can just try to do that more often. The two principal reasons have been the need for much higher participation than 44% or 50% in order to make it valid, and the resources involved in doing it. Doing test and stay and contact tracing is already hours and hours. We were told by the Director of Student Health Services that it takes 12 hours to contact trace for a high school student, two to five hours for an elementary school student. So, I think we need to try to do everything that we can. We may not be able to do everything. It is, there's a resource issue. And right now, one of the things I see is that we're trying, in our schools, to cover classrooms. If we had 10% of our staff out this week, can imagine the number was about 100? Was it less than that? I don't remember. I don't know if you said the number. Anyway, covering those classrooms and time periods is pretty important as well. So, it's, none of it's ideal. As Dan says, it's far from perfect.
No, and as I said, I'll repeat that, you know, for the surveillance testing, we'll discuss it again next week, and, you know, we'll keep trying to figure out what makes the most sense. And again, things have changed, so things could change around that. It may, you know, so.
Absolutely, it's something that could change, and another decision could be made. It's not been set in stone at any point. Other questions or comments? Michael?
Thank you. I make the same arguments very often that Aaron does about what we've lost in local information. That said, more information isn't always better information. Frank, one of the best ways to hide the truth is to bury it under a mound of information, which is why what Mary did here, you know, the synthesis and the curation is extremely important, right? Making sure that the information that does come out is, you know, clear and crisp, and we don't just throw a lot of information out, figuring, well, it's in there somewhere. So, I do appreciate that. That said, I think when it comes to the health and the safety, what's important is that, you know, we did talk about surveillance testing, and we did make the case, you know, early on as to why, you know, we were not doing it. I think where we probably can improve it is when things change, and I think that was one of the comments. If things have changed, even though, I trust that you are discussing it every week, and I fully believe that, you know, there's back and forth. It's not a party line, people aren't falling into line. I think when things change, that's when it's helpful to make sure that, in your weekly reports to us, you know, you just highlight that, okay, in this situation, whether it's surveillance testing or something else, or, you know, the six-month, or the boosters, that, you know, here's what's changed, and here's why we think it doesn't change what we're doing, or here's why we're still looking at it, or here's why we made a change. I think that's probably the most helpful thing that you can do in that situation. And then finally, I have a question for you, and I may have asked this before, but the snow day challenge, would you, would that be a binary decision, in the sense that if you had, like, two buildings that were having trouble staffing, would you close the whole district just to, because it's just hard to do it the other way? Or would you consider saying, you know what, we just can't get enough people at Cunyda Williams, we would close Cunyda Williams? And I don't know what the right answer, I just want to—
It would be based on the building. If a building had a significant issue, but the other schools did not, I would base it on that building, which has its own challenges for families who have kids at different levels.
Right.
For staffing that's shared. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that for all.
Right. That's actually very helpful, but I know there's some challenges even in doing that, because different people might get different information. And, wait, school's closed? No, one school's closed. So, probably be helpful to make sure that as you, the next time you communicate with parents, if you talk about this, just to say, if this happens, it may not look like a snow day, because a snow day, we close the whole district. Just so that they're aware that if it happens, they should be listening for what is closed.
Other questions or comments? Liz?
Just another thank you for just doing this still. I was going to say, at one point, I wanted to just raise my hand and say, can somebody just make this be over? So, if anybody out there is capable of doing that, please see me, and I'll help you take care of that.
That'd be great.
And again, all suggestions are welcome. I don't think anything we've heard, we're not willing to discuss. In fact, I would say we discuss all of them. One benefit of the Joint Health and Safety Committee is we have a testing expert there who does this work in other communities, which I think is a real help to us as well. And we're really lucky to have her there. So, maybe tomorrow will be a much better day. That's what we'll hope for each day. And any other suggestions are great. That being said, we'll go into school committee comments. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Michael, seconded by Andrea. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, 700. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.